My name is Ryan Kelly and I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the Inlands Wetlands Commission meeting for the town of Monroe. It is Wednesday, June 26, 2024, and the time is 7:02 PM. Will everyone please stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation with God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'll now take a roll call of the members of the commission and staff present during tonight's hybrid meeting. Please answer here or present. Starting off, Chairman Keith Romano is absent. Vice Chair Eric Lindstrom also absent. I am Ryan Kelly, the Secretary. Rick Smith?
Here.
Jim Stewart, credentialed licensed engineer in the state of Connecticut?
Here.
Here. Benjamin Sabia?
Here.
Paul Fernandez?
Here.
Kathleen Gallagher, planning and zoning administrator?
Yes.
Andrew Brodmann, Inlands Wetlands Enforcement Officer?
Here.
Before we start, I'll read our mission statement and how the meeting will proceed. Our mission statement is the objective and purpose of the Inlands Wetlands Commission is to provide for the overall protection and preservation of the inlands, wetlands, and watercourses within the town of Monroe, Connecticut. As far as meeting procedure, please note that this meeting is being conducted utilizing electronic equipment in compliance with state law, Public Act 21-1. As such, this meeting is being recorded and will be available to the public in compliance with state law. If you are attending remotely, please remember to mute your microphone unless speaking. Anyone participating remotely should state their name and title, if applicable, at the outset of each occasion that such person is speaking. Also, please your address. All votes taken during which any member of this body or participating remotely shall be taken by roll call unless the voting is unanimous. The chat feature will not be utilized or considered during this meeting. In the normal course of our meetings, we will hear public hearings and other applications. The protocol for public hearings is to have an applicant make a presentation to the commission during which, during after which, the commission will be asking the applicant questions. I ask that the applicants keep their presentations as concise as possible. The commission will then review town staff and other independent comments. The meeting will then be open for public comment. I will ask that all comments be made to the chair or commission. And any and all comments pro, in opposition, or of a general nature are made, the applicant will be given an opportunity to respond. Please keep comments or questions direct, or a time limit of three minutes may be imposed. It is not necessary that the applicant respond in these cases, but generally it's in their best interest to do so. There will be no further opportunity for new questions unless new material is entered in as evidence or testimony during their response. Please keep all comments pro, con, pro or con, specific to inlands, wetlands-related matters. Other applications that do not involve a public hearing will follow a similar format with the exception that there will be no public comments allowed. The meeting follows our published agenda unless otherwise amended. Kathleen, Andrew, are there any changes to the amendment to the agenda?
The only item would be under correspondence for the letter for 66 East Village. And that would have to be voted on and approved by two-thirds of this commission in order to be added to the agenda.
Do we have a motion to add that to tonight's agenda?
Motion to add the letter to the agenda.
Motion by Commissioner Stewart, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fernandez, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so vote of four to one opposition from Commissioner Smith.
Motion passes.
Yeah, so just as a point of interest for tonight, I am acting as chair of the commission for tonight, I'm prepared to, but we do need to take a vote for that in the absence of the chair and vice chair. Do I have a motion for that?
Motion that Commissioner Ryan Kelly act as chairman for tonight's meeting.
Motion by Commissioner Stewart?
Oh, sir.
Second by Commissioner Sabia, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So unanimous vote, 5-0. I do want to make one more quick comment before we move to general public participation. I just wanted to say that the commission is thinking of Chairman Romano and missing him in the chamber tonight. I just wanted to put that out on public record that we are thinking of Keith and missing him. With that, I will move to general, general public participation. Just to be clear, this is a time where anyone here in the public is able to come and speak on any matter that is not on tonight's agenda or will not be on the agenda in the near future. Is there anybody in the chamber that is here to speak for public participation of a general nature? No? Anybody participating online that would like to speak? Okay. Okay, so with that, I think we can move on to the regulated activities section of the agenda. Starting off, we're going to go with application acceptance, application for an acceptance or regular hearing, hearing determination for IWC 2024-06, file 1484, 588 Pepper Street. We have someone here to speak on behalf of the application?
Yes, Matt Baldina, professional engineer, real estate engineer here on behalf of the applicant. Ready to provide a brief overview of the project, just plug me into the computer. Just to make sure, if I'm right, or should I present? Or, sorry?
That's your preference, if you, you're gonna go through the history. Oh, I'm happy to piggyback on your preference.
I just didn't want to overstep, so just make sure we're on the same page here. Again, for the record, I'm a licensed professional engineer, real estate engineer, located at the level of Main Street, Connecticut, here on behalf of the applicant for this development, on the rear portion of the site of 588 Pepper Street. Quick overview of the project, so looking at the corner of Main Street, 25 Pepper Street. Portion of the property that's currently occupied in front by A&amp;B Mechanical. There's a rear access drive which serves diploma frame, just just to the rear of our site, on the north side of this area here. So quickly, I want to start with going over what's proposed, then I also want to give a quick history on the project itself. So as you can see here, the project proposes a 16,000 square foot many, sorry, warehouse facility in the rear portion of the site, which would utilize an area which is primarily consisting, existing of storage and has been improved with compacted buildings in the rear portion of the site. The project also includes 12,415 square feet of outdoor space, essentially relocating some of that outdoor space that's currently used now to accommodate the 16,000 square foot filled rear portion of the site. As mentioned, this would primarily consist of work in the rear portion of the site with some minor modifications, including some striping of the site drive. As you can see on this plan in the northeast corner, there's a red dash line that kind of goes through the page. That would be the limit of the upland review area. We do not have any wetlands on the property. The nearest wetlands, again, is in the northeast off of our property. That location has been approximated based on record maps of the adjacent property. And then there again, at the southern portion of our property, along Pepper Street, there's additional line showing the red dash there. That is again, upland review area with the wetlands on the far, on the south side of Pepper Street there. In the southwest corner of our property, there is a culvert seat. There is not a point in giving one simple. So again, in the southwest corner where the cursor is now, there is a culvert there, which again, would not, would not be touched during this development. We would discharge right prior to that culvert. After kind of going over that briefly, I did want to again mention the previous applications for this property. The application was, did come before the wetlands back in 2020, was received an administrative approval, as there's no wetlands on the site. We, it was seen that this was not a significant impact. And that was for a expansion to the parking area in the rear. As shown on this plan here. So as you can see, these are the approved plans for that development. Are primarily consistent with the development that's proposed here today. There is a small above around detention area that's located along the eastern side on the previously approved here that extends all the way up the eastern property line. With our proposed development, again, we would keep that similar. Above ground detention area along the eastern, again, primarily outside of the upland review area, but consisting with the previously approved design. For the stowaway located right on that upland review line for an emergency stowaway. That would not be activated even in a 100-year storm. We've designed the system, again, for that to be fully contained within the basin, even in a 100-year storm. Kind of toggling back and forth here between the two plans. Again, this proposed development would include an underground detention system, which would also add to the above ground detention system, prior to discharging across the property lot or along the run-in here, and then to the culvert point. And as you can see on the previously approved design, we would be maintaining that same discharge product that was previously discussed, reducing all peak flows and designing this in accordance with the 2024 storm warning guidelines, Connecticut storm warning guidelines, as well as the 2004 DOT drainage manual. And this is just kind of, so if you take the line of disturbance from the previously approved design and overlay that on our proposed design, so red is the previously approved limit of disturbance. You can see, we are contained within that area. So again, just a high-level overview of this application. So this commission has the ability to make a determination tonight whether or not this is either a public hearing or allows for administrative decision. It is our opinion, based on our view of previous findings for this site and for a development of this scale, that this could be allowed to be had on an administrative, we're going to request an administrative approval on this. Just kind of a quick overview of the project history, so I'd be happy to answer any specific questions in more detail regarding the article.
Before we do that, Kathleen, did you say, do you have something that you want to write?
Just for clarification and just support of what was already said, this application did come in front of the inland wetland commission on September 23 of 2020. At that time, this commission did vote for that to allow an agent approval for the application for the proposed modification, although the scope of work is very different holistically in the sense of the previous application was just an expansion of, well, not just an expansion, it was a pretty extreme expansion of the parking lot. This actually proposes a building. When you're comparing the scope of work within the limit of disturbance, not the limit of disturbance within the upland review area, it's actually quite similar. So staff has talked, as well as James DeMayo, the town engineer. We take no exception if this commission would like to vote to allow it to be an agent approval. However, we don't have strong feelings one way or the other. We're here to support this commission, but we take no exception if you would like to continue to follow suit as was previously proposed.
Well, I open up, Commissioner Smith, do you have any concerns?
Just note that I think that this is an overall improvement in the property. There are a lot of trucks and things in the parking lot, they're not going to be there. My only concern is the retaining wall to the northwest, but that's more planning zoning, so I have no statutes or concerns from wetlands related to this project.
Okay.
Oh, and I don't, and I don't, I don't know that there are any residences around the area that we should, you know, also consider, you know.
Well, again, just to kind of elaborate on the consideration of the project, the project did also receive a variance for the step back.
Yeah.
The variance application required notification to the abiding property owners. We did not have any abiding property owners speak about that, just to give you a little bit more feedback on that.
Yeah, I just worry about the water coming out of the road in the back. That's a really steep bankment behind it, but that's, that's more than a problem, sorry. I'm good.
Good.
Commissioner Scott, I don't have any questions and I don't have an issue with agent approval. The commission's good with that.
Commissioner Sabia?
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's fine. I think it's far enough away from the wetlands and everything like that. I would also be okay with agent approval.
Okay, Commissioner Fernandez?
Same.
Same?
Yeah, quite.
Motion that we send this to an agent approval, this application.
We have a motion from Commissioner Stewart to move this to agent approval. Second by Commissioner Smith, all in favor?
All right. Aye.
Unanimous, 5-0 for agent approval. God, I'm having to pull the map up faster. Okay, moving on, we're moving into regular meeting. The regular meeting section of the agenda. We have IWC-2015-19-AI, file 974, 64 Cambridge Drive. Proposal to modify plan revision to remove construction of stone wall.
Good evening, I'm Arnold Karp, I'm a managed member of Astro Landholdings, which is 64 Cambridge Drive. On June 12, one of my associates, Paul Stone, was here to ask for an amendment modification. This is a permit that relates back to 2015, I think before any professional wetlands. So the reason why I'm front of you is we have now completed all the work from the 2015 prior to our ownership that was outlined. And as we were going through the file, it shows a stone wall to be replaced. And we went back to pictures from that time and they're leaving you back in. And I have a thumb drive, wasn't the stone wall. The prior owner had actually taken riprap in the quarry and put it on the right-hand side to delineate a roadway from the wetlands. We have now built the berm, we've got planting. We've, as of last week, as of Saturday, paved the road. And we're coming in to ask that we not have to rebuild the riprap on top of the berm. As the berm eventually will grow into nature, for us, it only needs to install the device and the trap. We don't even have it on site, that's all been taken and either buried or we've gone on site a long time ago. Yes, when Paul was here, one of the questions was, where does the wall, where it was shown as drawn, again, it was the riprap. Where does that relate to the berm? I think there's a new set of plans that he sent up that would be right on top of the berm. And we have some, you know, all of our planting is in. Think of that sort of unnecessary thing that will only cause more destruction and eventually nature will take over. So I'm not sure how it ended up on plan 2015. We do have that one picture that shows coming down the road. So our request is pretty easy, which is to allow that to be modified and then come back a few months later and buy.
Okay. Before, before we open it up to comments among the commission, I'm looking for the document, do we have any, any notes from James DeMayo? I think I remember doing it, I think we're.
He did one original comment memo prior to the last meeting and he really only had one outstanding comment, which had to do with a separation delineation. Basically, his point being that if you are now going to take away the wall, the stone wall was to serve as a visual barrier outside of the proposed landscaping to help prevent encroachment to the wetlands. Some other form of barrier is recommended, or other means to assist in future inspections. So basically, and again, he and I spoke today. He, he's not necessarily very strongly opinioned one way or the other. He just wants to bring it to the commission's attention so that you guys can make a decision on whether you feel like there needs to be some sort of visual delineation and barrier to separate the developed area from the wetlands. And what that would look like would have to be a discussion amongst the commission.
Commissioner Smith, will I let you open it up again?
Yeah, it's clear to me that it's riprap. It was an assumption that the, obviously blasted rocks, so I would call it tallings. Do you know the difference between tallings and riprap?
Yeah, combination. It was clearly from the quarry that was being operated at the time. Today, we'd have to go out and buy natural stone.
So I don't have any problem with it.
It was just leaving it here, okay. Commissioner Stewart?
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, Commissioner Sabia?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
I agree.
All agreeing?
All comments?
Well, I think, I mean, I'm comfortable with it. You said that James, that his concern was not great. It was more a suggestion than.
He didn't have a strong opinion toward it.
Okay. Okay, I don't, I don't have any additional questions myself, so.
Are there, as part, I apologize, I love this answer. As part of the main approval, do you have wetland markers that are required in that area?
We don't, we'd be happy to put them in. Again, understanding that we will be back in front of this commission. We have 74 acres that we're trying to figure out what to do. So that, again, if wetlands, people come out saying like something in the future day, it's not like this disappears off your agenda incredibly. I think I'm in front of you guys for the next three to five years. But as far as a visual marker, you'd have to go up, sort of through the detention pond, up the knoll, and I have a feeling by the end of the summer, the wetlands area will have greatly overtaken most of the knoll. So it's an area that would be hard to get to and very delineated.
The, the point of the markers is just the reason we do it on everything. If at any point in the future, a contractor, an owner, the property gets sold, things like that, and somebody's just walking, there's at least something there within the area that lets someone know that they're approaching wetlands. It's not a flag, it doesn't denote the actual, you know, separation between that. It's just a visual barrier. So instead of having them do like a picket fence or something of the sort, that would be a little more labor-intensive. We make residents do this. They would have to do it every 75 feet. I mean, it's not even like on a fairly, you know, small basis, but it at least would give us something to have there. And I don't think it would be too much to ask if we wanted to do some sort of delineation in that area.
Honestly, I would like to make that as part of, we have no problem.
Okay. Everybody still comfortable? And if so, would someone like to make a motion?
Should we close the meeting with caring?
Except public, yeah, we motioned to close the public here.
It's a regular, right.
We motioned to close it, right? And then it's deliberation later in the.
It's a, it's a regular hearing, so I don't think we have to vote to close a regular hearing, but we can move it to a deliberation item after we get through the next public hearing.
Okay, well then, I'll say we'll close this hearing and move to deliberation later this evening. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll, I'll look into that if we have to vote to close the meeting.
Good first. Okay, moving on, we're moving to our public hearings for the evening. We have one, it is IWC-2018-07-A2, file 1145, which is 205 Monroe Turnpike, to request to modify the permit, to modify rear portion of development to accommodate self-storage building. And this is a continuation from the prior meeting. To you again, Mr. Baldina?
Yes. Again, for the record, I'm a licensed professional engineer, real estate engineer, located at the level of Main Street. I'm going to get here on behalf of the applicant for 205, 205 LLC. I will save the abbreviated version of this. Happy to answer any additional questions that may have come up between now and the last meeting. But I believe all commission members were either present in person or virtually for the last meeting. So just to kind of quickly go over the project. And this is the rear portion of the site, where the all re-located. The Nova Gas in the front and then the Perry Bread in the front as well. The Nova Gas had been subdivided off of the property after receiving approval originally. Subsequent to the last meeting, we have worked with the town engineer in order to establish a bond amount. We have no objections to his recommendation for the bond amount. It's 16,550. Additionally, we have worked with Andrew back and forth with regards to the wetlands in the area to add 12 perennials to the wetland restoration area. Located in the green corner of the property here. We have also added additional notes to the plan based on coordination with the wetland agent. Essentially, establishing that just would be monitored for two growing seasons. This would also be inspected and probably part of the restoration efforts. And then no additional vegetation would be removed or disturbed from the, from the wetlands. The exception of removing sediment that has accumulated in this area during construction activities. We have also been additional measures to prevent additional disturbance to this area in the meantime while we work to remedy this with the commission. So that was a quick overview. Happy to answer any questions that may have stemmed from the last meeting. There are any?
Commissioner Smith?
I have no further questions.
Commissioner Stewart?
Good.
Commissioner Sabia?
I'm also good.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Sir?
Any, any comments from staff about anything?
Staff has no outstanding comments. The only thing would be that if an approval is motioned, it is with a condition for a bond of 16,550 and also our standard conditions, which does include two growing seasons.
This is a public hearing. So before we go any further, is there anybody in the chambers or online that has any comments, pro, con, or indifferent about this application? Or indifferent about this application? No? Second call for online, anybody? Okay. So. Remind me, Kathleen, do we just vote to close this hearing as well and then this goes into deliberation?
Let's vote to close this one.
No, we don't vote to close. I can just flip. It is a public here. You want to?
I'm gonna vote, I'm gonna vote, I'm gonna say that we need to vote for the public hearing.
I need to look this up. I don't know why this is catching me up so much tonight, but it is.
I'm going to close the public hearing to five Monroe Turnbikes.
Okay?
Yeah, I'll suck it.
You have a motion from Commissioner Stewart, a second from Commissioner Sabia. All in favor? Five. Again, it's a five, five to nothing unanimous. Right, so that goes into deliberation tonight as well, correct? Okay. So now we do move into deliberation. So why don't we first? Let's open up deliberation for the. The regular hearing, the sixty-four Cambridge, Cambridge Drive. Commissioner Smith, any additional commentary? Any thoughts about Cambridge Drive? Yeah, take your time.
No, no, I don't.
Commissioner Stewart? Commissioner Sabia? Commissioner Fernandez?
Okay.
Motion, motion to approve the application of the elimination of the required stone wall. With the condition that wetlands markers be installed every seventy-five feet. In, in the location where the wall was originally proposed.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Stewart to approve with the condition of wetlands markers every seventy-five feet. In place of where the wall was removed. Do I have a second for that?
I will second.
Second from Commissioner Fernandez. All in favor?
Five.
Five? It's unanimous, five zero? Okay. I'll set there. Let's move to deliberations for two oh five Monroe Turnpike. Commissioner Smith?
Well, while I'm not pleased that the way this, the turns that, the turns that, that came about with regard to the. Work that was done in the, in the wetlands area. And I don't really believe, or I don't, sorry. I wish that there were more, it was more alternative. I, I still believe that the alternative of the twenty thousand square foot footprint would have been acceptable, but. I, I've been, I'm told it's not, so. I'll just, I, I did not approve initially, so I believe that I'm just going to abstain. I don't know that anything would have changed. About it, but I would have liked to have seen a smaller building. And less impact on the wetlands. Appreciating the remediation and all the efforts you've done. I just.
Commissioner Stewart, you have any comments? No, I'm good. Commissioner Sabia?
Yeah, at first I was also upset about the, the location of, of the wall to the wetlands, but. But the changes that were made and the planting situation that's going on here, I'm definitely a lot happier about it. Just wish there was less. Initial damage to the wetlands, but. I'm okay with how it's going now and the proposed fixes to that.
Commissioner Fernandez? Kathleen, can you remind me again the bond?
In thousand five hundred and fifty.
Sixteen thousand. Fifty.
Motion, then we approve IWC two thousand eighteen oh seven eight two. Two thou, or two oh five Monroe Turnpike with the standard conditions and a bond of sixteen thousand five hundred and fifty dollars.
And, and our other standard conditions?
Yep, and then in our standard conditions, yes.
Yep. A motion by Commissioner Stewart to approve with the conditions of the sixteen thousand five hundred and fifty dollar bond and other standard conditions.
I will second.
Second by Commissioner Fernandez. All in favor? All opposed? Any extensions? One abstention, so it's four, zero with one abstention from Commissioner Smith? Okay.
Motion passes and although I know it did get off to a rocky start, I do want to acknowledge that the applicant has been working. Has been very, very attentive to staff's comments over the last two weeks and very responsive and giving us stuff and. Made sure even to get a last minute submission into us so that we would have. It on paper as compared to conditions of approval for this and staff is very appreciative of their effort working through this.
Yep.
Based on that, I can, I can vote approval. Appreciate you, you know, sometimes, you guys understand.
We do, yeah, we'll put, if we could just put it on public record that, that Commissioner Smith does support the idea.
I do appreciate efforts. I really do.
Yep, it was, it was a difficult situation. We do appreciate the willingness to, to work with it now.
And I, I do remember the chair being pissed.
Yep. Okay, so that.
Thank you.
That goes as our deliberations for the evening. Next is bond release, reduction requests. We don't have any. IWC agent activities report. Agent approvals. Looks like we have two of those. IAA dash two zero two four dash one zero. File one forty-three for two five one Guinea Road. Proposal for an above ground pool.
Yeah, the proposal is for an above ground pool. It was within the URA in addition to the. Yeah, it was about fifty feet outside the wetland areas within the URA. We, we didn't agent approval. It's now in the process. Of, the public notice has been issued and we're waiting for. The fifteen day. The fifteen day waiting period.
Okay.
It's pretty low impact. It's a, it's, it's a pool, above ground pool on grade on gravel, on base gravel.
Okay. Excellent. Any questions or comments about that in the commission? No? Okay, the second is IAA dash two zero two four dash zero seven file one four seven eight. Seven seven Millbrook Terrace. Proposed two seventy-two square foot addition within the one hundred foot upland review area.
Again, it's within the hundred, it's in the upland review area. It's about seventy-five feet off of the wetlands. Where the construction is supposed to take place. It's pretty low impact. There were two trees that were. Again, seventy-five feet outside the wetland area that they were proposing to cut down, so. They were hailing trees and we had no issue with that. Again, it is in, the public notice has been issued and we are waiting the fifteen day waiting period.
And just for clarification while we're on this and we have new staff, so for the agent approvals, the way that we've been acting is. If they're a residential project. If they're within the hundred foot upland review area, but more than twenty-five feet from the wetland. And based on just, you know, general judgment, call of intensity. We've been doing that as agent approvals while we have new staff. Does anybody have any? Additional information they would like to put forward of something that maybe the commission wants to make sure that they see that comes in front of them? Based on intensity use, things of that nature. If, if we ever have a question, obviously we can bring it in front of you before we issue an agent approval, but I didn't know if there was just any other guidelines.
Not for me.
Yeah.
So keeping in mind that hundred foot is the standard. It can be increased to two hundred feet based on grade and some other factors. So I just would, I, I, I do have a lot of trust for Andrew and, and the ability of the, of you guys to make good decision. But I just, you know, just keep it in mind and, and I like it when you come back to us and say, you know what? I do this, but I want you guys to be sure. So don't ever, you know, I just would encourage you to, you know, to. To feel comfortable with your decisions and understand that. If, if it's, if there's water going from two hundred feet away into the wetlands, then that needs to be addressed. So understood, okay.
Commissioner Stewart, anything else? Commissioners?
I actually got one question. On the pools for the backwash. Where do they backwash? I'm just curious, when they're backwashing and we're, we're within a hundred feet of wetlands. Are they going to backwash into that space? Or is there some other mechanism or area?
That's a good question. It's something we can bring up too with James. I have had, not here, but in the past where we've made them pump it offsite. I mean, we've, we've got.
And now backwashing is not every week.
When we go down, we do it that way, but that's something we can, we can talk to James. That's something we can look into.
Comment on that?
No, that's an excellent comment.
Say, you know. And, and more or less just education for the homeowner.
Yep.
To understand that, oh yeah, I'm just going to put the hose out and dump five hundred gallons of corinated pool water. You know, just an awareness and do we have any concerns or do we have any guidelines around that?
That's, we can come up with some standard notes to put in as a condition of the approval.
Not to oppose or, or prevent this, just.
Yeah.
Going forward for understanding and, and. And to help our residents too, because they may not know.
Like, it's a pool, it's pretty cool.
And again, you don't do it every week, but you do it, you know, occasionally.
Right.
And, you know, beginning and ending of opening your pool. And above ground pools, not a lot of water, but in-ground pools.
Yeah.
Could have.
That's a good point.
I don't own a pool, just for the record.
Well, we're checking.
Seem awful knowledgeable.
Yeah.
I read a lot.
Okay. Okay. No other comments? No? Okay. So then let's move to the enforcement section of the agenda. Looks like there are two of those. Request for inspection for one eighty-one Hattertown Road being the first. Building of structures and storage, vehicles and trailers within a hundred foot of the upland review area. Servants of wellens and waterfalls.
So a complaint came in from a neighbor of one eighty-one. And upon investigation, their, their complaint was that a. Non-compliant building was being erected. So upon. Upon investigating that, we also noticed that there's watercourses in the backyard. And significant wetlands in the backyard. And there's a number of vehicles, there's a number of trailers all being stored within that area. Not only that, but it looks like a path has been created and from the GIS. We can't really see to what extent that path is. Whether it's a boardwalk, whether it's a footpath, whether it's a vehicle path, we can't really tell. So I just want to kind of bring it to your attention that this is coming down the pike. I did issue them a, a letter asking for an inspection on the property. They did actually just respond. I was expecting no response. They did actually respond today.
Okay.
And Friday, we are going out to do an investigation.
Okay.
When I get back from that, at the next meeting, I'll update you on what I found. I just kind of wanted to make you. The committee aware of it.
Yeah. Okay, did you see that? Thank you, Andrew.
And then, oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
No, yeah, you go ahead.
So I issued also a voluntary compliance letter for thirty-seven Parkview Lane. A complaint was made about a brush being. Being dumped on town property across the street from thirty-seven Parkview Lane. They did come in, they addressed. They addressed the issue. And now I'm waiting for a call back. And if I don't get one by the end of this week, I'll place the call when they remove the debris that they have deposited. And I think it's more than, I think it's more than just picking up your debris and being gone with it. I would like to see. Underneath that pile, what kind of damage has been done to the existing vegetation? And possibly monitor, but we'll approach that when I go out and see.
How, how substantial is that?
It's, it's. It's not significant. It is. About a tractor bucket's worth. Two piles about that size. So it could be one season, it could be two seasons, and what it consists of is. Pruning clippings. Grass clippings. So they, you know, obviously did either a spring cleanup or pruning, but. That does present a problem. I don't know, you know, if those clippings are infested with, you know. Insects that are going to now make their way into the wetlands, so.
Potential introduction of invasive species, things of that nature.
Got it.
The other item to note on this is not related to this enforcement violation. I just want to make that very clear. This is a separate issue, but on the same property. When investigating that enforcement, there are some other things that are happening on that property. Which we are currently investigating how to best remediate those and we'll, we'll come to you with an update. Once we have a full understanding of, of how some of that has been done and some of those remediation efforts. Basically, people are just using it as a, a travel way to get to the ball fields on the other side. So someone's mowing it, somebody is, you know, making some pathways and things.
Maintaining the path.
Yeah, things and things of that nature. So we're just going to come up with some. Suggestions for behavioral changes and helps of discarding behavior.
Okay, any, any questions or comments about the enforcement? No comments? Comments? Thank you, Andrew. So moving on, permitted use as a right. Doesn't look like we have anything there for respondents. That is the, the letter for sixty-six East Village. In the last meeting, we voted to approve the letter with modifications that were made. So is today's conversation just?
I think just to let you know that. Commissioners have the opportunity to sign it at meeting and then staff will make a record of it and send it out. To the homeowners, but just that it's here, it's been reviewed and if, if willing, we would like your signature.
Should we do that?
We can do it after the meeting. Just want to have it as record that we are doing it. We will send it out.
Understood. So the last section is general discussion, decisions and other. There's the upcoming hearing for fifteen thirty-six and fifteen sixty four Monroe Turnpike. There was an adjustment from the original draft agenda to the final with the date adjustment for July. It's July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four. That will be our next meeting. Any other comments on that staff?
We only have one meeting in July, one meeting in August, so the July twenty-fourth is a July meeting. This is the application. This is a resubmission of the subdivision. It was previously in front of you. It was a nine, it was previously proposed as a nine lot subdivision. It is now coming back in front of you as an eight lot subdivision. As was requested, there was a site visit done by several of the commissioners and then we just asked that you make note of that and during the public hearing. Process that you give everybody a description of what you saw. Things specifically of note that might impact your determination. Additional questions and things of that nature that we can ask at that time. We will be opening the public hearing at that point and we will have to have. Some discussions about opening, closing the public hearing within thirty-five days. We'll start to have some discussions with the applicant because I'm feeling it's going to go a little bit past that. So just that everybody's prepared for extensions if needed.
To that point, just knowing that this is a. Busier. But with, with, with summer schedules. Is, should we discuss the possibility of adding a second meeting in August? I know nobody loves that idea, but just. To ensure that we have the opportunity to make the necessary progress.
Yeah, you can. So you, as a commission, we can hold a special meeting. It has to get noticed a little differently, but we do it all the time. So we'd be happy to do that if the commission would like to have a second meeting in August.
I want to make that decision alone. This is the commission. This is the commission. Commissioner Smith, do you think that's a good idea? Either it could be the the seventh or the fourteenth of August. I think it's, the other concern is that 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 August meeting date is right before Labor Day. So not only are we only two meetings between today and the end of August, but we also may have conflict with that holiday week meeting in. I don't. Does anybody, anybody have any opinions go down the line just about adding a meeting, do you think it's not fair?
I'm willing to do a meeting if if we feel warranted, I mean, it's a very sensitive subject to neighbors and.
Yeah, I think I think we should anticipate that there will be a significant amount of public participation.
Agreed.
And not to say that we can get it all done without talking about extensions, but perhaps having that extra time.
I think you should maybe just have it in your, so the next meeting is August twenty eighth.
Yeah.
I would just, yeah, maybe have it, it would either be the fourteenth would be the there's a Board of Health meeting that night. I don't know if they meet here.
On vacation the first week, so the seventh doesn't work for me, but the fourteenth does.
I am candor that fourteenth, I'm actually, so this may be another issue for us altogether.
And to be honest, based on what based on what this commission requests, it might actually be beneficial to have some time to give the applicant some time to pull together some information.
That's something, do we have the capacity to wait till the July meeting and then make that decision, or is there not enough time to notice it?
Oh, for the meeting?
Yeah.
We'll have plenty of time to notice it, it'll be fine, I think you've just set forty eight hours in advance.
Oh, okay.
Meeting.
So then perhaps we just table that topic and we see how July goes.
But if people can look at their calendar so that we can have an enforcement session, that would be helpful.
Okay, okay. Okay, so we'll leave that alone for now. The minutes.
So it was a good sidewalk, it was conducted appropriately, I think it was great, the deep what you call these, you know, what deep instructions onto us as far as how what we should and should not do, I think we did a good I believe we did a fine job, but it does say the inland wetlands agency should always follow the sidewalk with written minutes that are made part of the record. So because I, actually, it's not in the minutes, in the minutes that Ben suggested the sidewalk, but I suggested it. I, when I was done with the sidewalk, I I took significant time to make sure I was documenting facts and and, you know, if you want me to, it's handwritten, I can write it up and send it to you, it's my, it's only my input, I.
So the, so statutorily, we're only required to do meeting minutes if it's a meeting. So that means you had quorum, you did not have quorum for.
For three, yeah.
Well, it does say that we should always follow the sidewalk with written minutes that are made part of the record, so I'm just going by the.
Yeah, it is a suggestion, however, if it was conducted appropriately, there shouldn't really have been much of if zero discussion, because it's really just discussion of the lay of the land, what's over here, what's over there, so there there really shouldn't actually be too much actual discussion for the meeting minutes, which is why I think it's for the record to make sure everything's on at the public hearing to include that as part of the public record, if everybody can just do a review of what you saw. Your observations and of.
Bringing that into public record may may not be necessary or the right procedure, but I'd say that that will be valuable when we open that.
Yeah.
When we open the application, so keep the notes, let's definitely talk about.
No, I thought I thought I thought about it and how I did, you know, I tried to word it just completely factual, not not, you know, and so I'm just just I just wanted to, if there was, because I did want to show the public that, hey, we really do care, we did a downtown job for the for the, yeah, that's all.
Okay, if you even just read it at the public hearing, if you want to do that, yeah, you know, to make sure that it's in the.
Be appropriated.
Yeah. I think that would.
That would probably have a couple of, then afterwards, I would say my observations are those.
Yeah, I think that's.
Well, you should be all your observations.
Well, most of it is, you know.
You're really only attesting to yourself.
You saw.
Yeah, but, I mean, you know, we walk south through lots two and one, Rose Covert area across from Old Shore Road, there are disturbance, you know, downhill of all flagged, majority flagged, you know, large boulder.
Yeah, that's your, those are your, those are your observations.
Definitely, yeah, I think that falls into the category of your observations and then.
But I don't need to.
Post commissioner's opinion.
Please don't make me type it up.
You reading it, that's even less necessary, so.
So just for summary, this was just general discussion as it relates to scheduling and procedures and things of that record. Anything, there, I don't believe there's really been anything said here that, you know, has impact on the actual project, but the public hearing opens on July twenty fourth, that's when we start entering things into the record, so anything that is appropriate according to deliberations, or anything you've said here tonight that you feel like is appropriate to have in the record, I just had that you repeated on a twenty.
If it's Commissioner Smith's, in his defense, like we, as a commission, in the two years I've been here, the number of sidewalks has been fairly limited, so I think I think I understand not, you know, offering that, not knowing the rule, because I wouldn't have known it either, so I think bring those, bring those notes. Get an opportunity to read it when we when we open the the hearing.
Yeah, well, the last sidewalk I did, approved by Cheryl Valerie, I did note, I did read what my comments were, we're on a town line auto.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, okay.
I thought it was appropriate then, I think it's appropriate now.
Yeah, absolutely, I think, no, no disagree. Okay. Okay, so moving on, the minutes from our prior meeting on June twelve, twenty twenty four. Acting as as a dual role as the secretary, I did review those minutes and I have no adjustments. Again, for the second week, I want to comment on Carrie's excellent job of getting those minutes into my inbox so quickly and having them ready for the next meeting, makes a big difference. So I have, I can't make a motion, but I did review the minutes and have no concerns. So do we have a motion to approve them?
I do have one concern.
You do?
Yeah, just it was what Commissioner Smith just said, he was the one that requested the sidewalk, not me, I don't know if that if that.
No, maybe we can.
Adjustment, okay.
The only reason I said that is because I didn't want to step on your your toes, because you were you were in the sidewalk as well, I just took the initiative to write up stuff.
Yeah.
Whatever.
That's fair, no, that's, no, no, you don't, don't even do say that.
So the change is that it was Commissioner Sabia that made.
Made them.
Oh, it was Commissioner Smith.
Commissioner Smith made the request for this.
We can, we can approve it with that change.
Can can we motion to approve with condition of that adjustment?
Yeah.
Do we have a motion? Motion from Commissioner Smith to approve with the condition of the adjustment that who requested the sidewalk? Do we have a second?
I will second.
Commissioner Fernandez seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Five to nothing, unanimous vote. Public outreach, I don't think we have anything, I do know, Kathleen, I think you mentioned that you wanted to talk about request for anonymous.
Oh, yeah, just to bring the commission, just for general discussion, just to bring this commission up to speed. We have been asked if we could, we, the town, could review our policy on anonymous complaints. So right now, our policy is that we do not accept anonymous complaints. There is a variety of reasons for that, one of it is making sure we're always in compliance with FOIA, which is the Freedom of Information Act, where people can request copies of the town's records in any way, shape or form, it's very difficult to keep anonymous complaints anonymous and also still be in compliance with FOIA. We also like to have a contact person to ask questions to, access to different parts of properties and things of that nature, in order to do our best investigation when we do or do not have access to certain properties or can see things from the road. So we we do have our current reasonings, it is the policy we have inherited, just because it's what we inherited, doesn't mean it's the way we want to move forward, it doesn't mean that there's not the opportunity for tweaks. So the Planning and Zoning Subcommittee will be looking at it at their July eighth meeting, because violations do include wetlands, I just wanted to bring it to this commission's attention in case that you had any comments you wanted me to bring to Subcommittee on behalf of yourself, you know, individually as a as a commissioner. Planning and zoning Subcommittee is going to review it, both from anonymous complaints from residents and also potentially anonymous complaints via a commissioner. A lot of things were kind of thrown out there and we're gonna disseminate it into something that we feel like makes sense from a complaint policy.
I do have, I have a couple of brief thoughts on it, but I'll go down the line if anybody else does, Commissioner Smith, any any thoughts? On that topic?
Pros and cons, I think we should discuss, but I don't have anything tonight to say, I I understand as as an avenue, you don't want to have repercussions to a between neighbors, but I also, you know, it's it's easy to throw dirt and said who did it.
Yeah. Commissioner Stewart?
Yeah, it's it's not an easy, easy thing to deal with. So I I'm gonna let you guys decide how you want to deal with it.
Thank you.
So I get your vote?
Yeah. So you got my vote.
Yeah, I mean, it's definitely, it's a it's a heavy topic, but it's it is one of those ones that it's like you gotta, there's a fine line, because you don't want retaliation from neighbor to neighbor and with how heated people can get sometimes, it's it's a slippery slope.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yeah, anonymous complaints of any type are very difficult to manage and respond to. Maybe there could be a stipulation to degree of it, whether it's released or not, because it will be a burden for both committees, and I'm not sure how successful they are, because sometimes the complaint is nonvalid. And then we have to spend time, effort and resources to validate that. And, you know, if there really is a true complaint, there should be someone that should be able to respond and stand and reply to it and provide information versus us guessing of how it should be, so maybe we take it in between and say, well, under certain conditions, maybe it doesn't need to be. It can be non, so again, very difficult, not very efficient.
I will say that we, as a staff, health, safety and welfare always rises to the top. If somebody says, hey, this person's filling the wetlands, you can see it from the road.
Right.
We always go check it, if somebody says, hey, someone put up a fence in the sightline at this intersection and we can't see when we pull out, we always follow up with those things, where it gets sticky is when there's a violation going on in someone's backyard that can only be seen by the neighbor.
Right.
You know, and they put, they want to put anonymous complaint in, and it's hard for us to.
So we should probably reposition the drone. Anyways, that's just my thoughts on it, it's it's a very.
Yeah, because that is the back and forth, and then the item is, you know, if they send us an email, they say I want this to be anonymous, someone puts in a FOIA request.
They get the email, yeah.
They get the email, is it, you know, so so when we talk about anonymous, what do we really mean by anonymous, because there's avenues to get through it, so we're looking at it all in different ways, and maybe there's just, maybe there's something in between with people understanding the risks, so.
Yeah, I've had a little bit, just hearing that this was something that was kind of bubbling up, I I've thought about it, and initially I did, I I kind of liked the idea of it in the sense that it encourages the public to be diligent about things that are happening that shouldn't be, and that's valuable. Because, you know, Andrew, Steph and John, we can't, we can't be everywhere all the time, right? But with that said, I think there's nothing, it's okay to be uncomfortable with calling out your neighbor and to be worried about that. But doing the right thing is not always easy, I think I said that to you earlier, and that's, like, discomfort is not an excuse to not do the right thing when it's when it's something relevant happening. And I do think that, like, this is drawing lines in my own head, but like, you think of the internet, like, it's a lot easier to say things behind a screen, so anonymity is is just like that, you can you can start throwing stones, like Rick said, and I don't think that that's in the best interest of the town, of the staff, of the town in general, I I think that it's fair, it's fair to be able to make that to be expected to give your name and make a complaint, when you add in all the other details like FOIA, I think that's that's just adding to it even for for why I think the name is relevant, I think it's important. So.
I will bring some of these comments to Subcommittee and I'll update you guys either way, if we come up, if we don't change the policy, if we choose to come up with something in writing and things of that nature, and we'll move forward from there.
With that, I can just adjourn, right?
I believe so, yeah.
Being adjourned.